You guys just want to wait another minute? What do you want to do?
I don't have an answer for that.
That was perfect. Oh, that's so funny. Nigel, I call him Nigel.
Yeah, I like his voice. My voice is loud.
Oh, did you? Yeah, I'm Nigel. We call him the Nigel.
It's amazing how your phone or device will do that out of the blue.
That was a good answer. It seems like a chat GPT thing or something. Yeah, I answered.
Yeah.
You want to give them a couple of minutes?
Oh, they already bought this stuff in.
Oh, yeah. Normally, we're set up tonight.
Yeah, I know. I know. Yeah.
That's okay. No stress. We'll get it.
Yeah. A lot of moving parts, as they say. Well, should we?
What does the board want to do? Give them a couple of minutes?
I mean, it's a workshop. Another minute or two.
Thank you.
Yeah, that way people can look at material.
Michael will be starting in a few minutes. He's our CPA, running back again about the sewer, just because.
Okay, just to answer questions.
Make sure everybody's questions are answered. Let me move forward.
Since we are all sitting here, should we just start asking some questions about the budget and start the meeting?
So you want to, okay, come on, let's do that. Okay. I make a motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second?
One second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Liken?
Hi.
Trustee Lanier?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, so the purpose of the meeting, it's our budget workshop. We have the tentative budget before us. And it looks like, I can't see who's walking in the building.
Dan.
Dan, okay. So we'll have another trustee joining us shortly, which is great.
Do you want me to go over what I gave the board this evening? Okay. What I presented the board is the tentative general and tentative sewer budget. This is information I received from Brooklyn, changes the board requested from the last meeting. I also gave you the increase sheet. And I hope it's self-explanatory. The yellow highlight tells us the key point there. And then I also gave you individually the salary information, which typically is reviewed in executive session.
If I might just ask a question about the self-explanatory sheet?
Sure.
Maybe it's not self-explanatory to me entirely. So you said the highlighted portion shows the increases. So we've got three different highlighted lines.
Okay, let me explain. Okay. I highlighted the tax cap, just so everybody's aware where the tax cap increase would have put us. The 4.90 correlates to the 4.38550.
Yep, that's the current. So in the current budget, we have the 4.38.
That's the increase I'm requesting in the overall sewer, not sewer.
A general.
General. So.
Okay, good.
That makes sense. Just so you had a levy where the tax levy percentage is and where we are.
And if you could explain the, so let's see, in the right hand, under tax rate, we've got the 4.
That would be?
Oh, $4.90. Okay.
Yep, $4.90. Our current tax rate is $4.71.99998. Basically, 4.72. It's an 18%. 18 cent increase, which is relatively minor.
Okay, thank you for going through that. It wasn't quite clear to me where we.
Nice.
Bring up the chair. Okay, so Dan, just relatively quick.
Did you send this in itself?
I did.
Okay, great.
You might have the wrong Excel sheet for the budget, though. I have it here immediately. I've given you the tentative sewer and tentative general, the wages, and the increase sheet. So should we get started with the CPA?
That would be great.
So can you unmute Mike? Mike, you can unmute. I brought Michael DeBak spec. He is our CPA that oversees all our accounting and helps us balance our books and keeps things where it needs to be. There was additional questions on the 22% and how I got there. So we had had his partner, Mr. Zubrin, a couple of meetings ago that went over all the best practice of what we're doing.
Those were the initial meetings that we had.
Yeah.
He came in to.
Just so we all were.
Tell us the best practices.
So I could move forward. So Michael's just going to answer any questions to make sure everybody understands how I got to the 22% and that this is, I want to say, best practice going forward. Is that? Makes sense? So, Michael, can you go over why we need to do this?
Well, so, you know, I'm here. I'm happy to. Yeah, can you hear me?
I'm muted.
Can you hear me?
Do you have sound?
Is this on? There.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There we go.
Great. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm, you know, really here just to answer any additional questions that anybody has about, you know, the process of allocating some of those, some of those general village, village office costs to the sewer fund in the appropriateness of that. And we had sent over some information, you know, that we had received from, from the comptroller's office talking about the appropriateness of allocating some of those costs to, over to the sewer fund and the fact that, you know, those, those two funds are really funded by separate, you know, separate tax bases. There's different, different residents that are funding those, those different purposes between the general fund and the sewer fund in, in, you know, indicating that it is appropriate to allocate some of those costs to, to the sewer for, to reflect the, the services that are being provided to keep the sewer operations going. And, you know, what the, what the village has, has done in terms of, the OSC guidance doesn't give, this is how you should, should allocate these costs. They just say that the, the village should have, be able to demonstrate and document the calculation that's been performed in order to come up with the costs that are being allocated out to those other funds. You know, so the, the village has taken, taken some steps to actually look at, you know, some of those direct costs that are easily quantifiable in terms of time that different folks are spending that are paid out of the general fund and the time that they're spending related to sewer fund-related services and some of those other direct costs that can be, can be identified there. And then taking an average of those costs to come up with the 22% to be used and applied for some of those other indirect costs, which, you know, from based on my, my understanding of it, appears to meet that those guidelines that the comptroller's office has, you know, laid out there for, for what would be deemed an appropriate methodology to use to, to allocate some of those costs.
Thank you, if I may. So we discussed this a bit at the last meeting too, and I don't believe that I've seen the information from the comptroller. We talked about sending that around, I think, and having some material to prepare for this meeting. I haven't received anything. Has that been sent around to the board?
I thought that went out early days. Yeah, it was sent in an earlier packet, like.
I can. No, let's go right now.
Sure.
Give me a minute. Come on, Michael's here. You can yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, so keep going.
Sorry.
Michael, this is Mayor Plummer. Thanks so much for attending the meeting and just, you know, walking us through some of the questions that we have. We really appreciate you taking the time.
Absolutely. Sorry I couldn't be there in person today.
Well, you're coming through loud and clear, so thank you. Yeah. You know, can you talk about maybe other municipalities and is this essentially a common practice?
Yeah, this is, this is a pretty common practice. We see in different towns and villages that, that we work with that have, that are, that have water and/or sewer operations to reflect the time that, you know, the, the village board is spending on, on evaluating different sewer operations and then to reflect the, all the time that goes into collecting those, those different payments for those, what we would call enterprise funds, the ones that are really funded through, through user charges for a specific service type of thing. When, when they don't, when the, the sewer districts don't have full-time employees that are providing that service, it's pretty common for, for those costs to be allocated. As far as, you know, I can't, I wouldn't speak too specifically to the actual percentage that has been identified and how that compares with other municipalities, because it really is, you know, it does come down to the local, the local government coming up with what an appropriate allocation is and the amount of time that different people are spending in different places. So, you know, one, one village, you know, can, can come up with a, an allocation of 22%. Another village may come up with an allocation of 35%, and another one may be at 10%. So I wouldn't speak too much to that in the broader sense, because obviously different villages operate differently. But the, the actual practice of allocating the cost, we do see quite commonly. And then it, you know, it just comes down to the, the local government coming up with that allocation method.
And so really, prior to us actually starting to do this, we were, you know, there are different essentially tax bases. And so we were sort of cross-pollinating some of those funds.
You know, essentially, you know, the, the general fund budget is allocated and taxed out to all of the residents of the village based on, you know, the, the tax rate and all of that. And then the sewer district doesn't, doesn't encompass all of the same users that, you know, represent the population of the general fund.
Gotcha. Now, that's helpful. So it, it, you know, to me, it seems that it's creating greater clarity about, you know, what, where the money's going in the budget, you know, to see this. I mean, I think, I think it's certainly clearer for me. So Dorothea just distributed.
You'll see it's a series of emails. Here are cash.
Oh, from the comptroller's. Yep. So this is helpful too. Thank you.
And, and you know, I, I will just say, as it says in the email, you know, this, you know, if this isn't necessarily authoritative guidance saying this is what you have to do, this is saying that, you know, the, their office has deemed that it's, it's appropriate. And just to have, to maintain that documentation of, of how the, you know, the allocation was determined is, is what's important.
Right. And so working, you know, and that's important to have that, you know, the methodology documented. And so that's something that you and Dorothea kind of worked on to move this forward.
We have the, and if you look at the wages, if you see at the very, very bottom, there's a tippy, tippy, it says 22%. And that's how I got there. It's a solid numbers to work from. And that was the key in developing a methodology. You have to have something you can base it off of. And salary is a pretty solid number. So, and those are determined, you know, we review about the amount of times DPW spends, the amount of time the office spends, everybody touching sewer. So that's where we got the number. So if you take an average of that, that seems pretty close. I mean, we're not talking something like a vehicle or a building. It's the average, you know, insurance, it's certain things, you know, postage was easy to allocate out because that's pretty sight. Look at what you're getting sent for sewer. But some of these items is not that easy to quantify. So you have to find a number you can use as a simple number to plug in when you're balancing those numbers.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation on this. I have to say that personally, I don't recall seeing this email before. Does anybody else recall seeing this email before?
I apologize. I thought I sent it out, but I sent it different things. So it could be a fault of mine.
Okay. And Michael, I do appreciate your explanation. What you're, what was said in the email and what you're saying now makes sense to me. I agree that there should be some allocation dependent on an accepted methodology. And what I said in the previous meeting and what I'll reiterate briefly today is that I don't see a firm enough basis for me to justify the blanket 22% allocation, especially outside of the sewer department. What I would like to see is that since we are the fiduciaries for the village, what I would propose and what I would feel much more comfortable with is if the board is presented with the data from the different areas and then we look at it and we decide and adopt a resolution that says this is the allocation that we feel is appropriate in the different areas. I think that it's, to me, it's too much to be shoving this just into the budget here. And I would like to see that as a separate process where we intentionally exercise our discretion to, to make a decision that we feel comfortable with before moving forward.
Can I ask a question? What basis do you think that allocation should be done off of? I mean, the solid numbers we have to use is salary. And those have been around, those numbers were, been established for many, many moons and been reviewed each budget time. So to me, it seems like a standard number going forward to use for those allocations, because if, per se, we've discovered 22% total staff's time is spent on sewer, it would make sense that 22% of the cost incurred for electric, computer, any of those things would correlate to that number. So I'm trying to see what other thing outside of us punching in every hour we spend on sewer, which.
Which is impossible.
It's impossible.
We're not going to do that.
And you can't measure, you know, the time like RGME or any of those other items. So I'm trying to get what number, where would you get that number?
Can I? Well, I have a process question and then we can get back to this. So we have a hard stop because there's an HPP meeting.
Correct.
It's 4:20 right now. What I would propose is that we spend no more than 10 more minutes on this particular topic, because we've been over this at several, several meetings and we have a bunch of other stuff to do. Among them, looking at, the most important thing is looking at which line items have grown the most and shrunk the most. Can do that. And I don't, this is the third or fourth meeting in a row that we've talked about this. So at a certain point, how about 10 more minutes?
I'm good. I just want to make sure.
I'm looking at you addressing the whole board. 10 more minutes on this one and then we move on to other things?
I think that's fine. And I also think we're, in this instance, we are fortunate to have our CPA here who can really help us understand the extrapolation and why things were done a certain way, in addition to the fact that the treasurer has shared this information on numerous occasions as well. So I'm fine with 10 minutes. I think that's probably, you know, we can't wrap it up in 10 minutes. I don't know that we ever will.
I think that sounds reasonable too. If I might just respond to our treasurer's question first. In our last meeting, which I don't think has been posted yet, and there have been other priorities, then that's fine. But we, we did talk about this issue and we talked about the fact that the DPW has reported and itemized their time between sewer and other hours. I think that's perfectly adequate. What I would like to see there is just a sample of a couple of days of that perhaps, a week or two. And then we would say, yes, that breaks down to 22%. We'd vote on it, move ahead, and that would be a done deal. That's a great piece of empirical data that perfectly justifies the percentage allocation. What I would like to see is some kind of a sample. Maybe it's a call record for a day. How many are about, you know, we're allocating 22% of the utilities and phone. So let's take a sample for one day and then decide on that as a, as a village. To me, we haven't done that yet. And, and so I wouldn't feel comfortable going ahead with changing this around. On the, on the same topic, I want to mention that in the comptroller's audit in 2017, they cited issues with having too large of the sewer fund at that time, which wasn't structured enough in terms of reserves. At that time, the board had already adopted a, a plan for the general fund. We had a policy about a certain amount of reserves to be, to be held aside, right? And the comptroller said that we did a good job there, and I agree with that. But we hadn't done that for the sewer fund. Since then, we've structured more of that in terms of reserves. And, and I think that, you know, there's, there's less of a unstructured surplus there, which is a good thing. But we don't have overall fund policies for that that are adopted as.
Actually, we do have a fund balance policy for sewer that was adopted in 2021, 2020 or 2021. We did adopt that. When they came in and did the updated audit, it was discovered that they, when we did our fund balance policy for general, it was discovered that was missing. And we were unaware we needed one. We adopted it and it was done. And it correlates it to the same language as the general.
Great. I, I do appreciate that. I've got to go back and look at that, obviously. What I would like to see, though, is, as I said, a more intentional empirically-based method for, for allocating the percentage and also a longer-term multi-year plan, multi-year capital plan for that fund before we start changing around large-scale allocations. I'm all done. So we've got five more minutes left in dance.
Yeah. So one of the things that you could do is help with that, you know, you know, get involved in. It seems to be very passionate for you. So the idea that everyone creates, you know, we're a working board, have to contribute.
So one of the things you have the most concern with was like windows and some of those things in the, the building itself. Is there a number that you'd be comfortable with? I like, I like this, the, the plan, the structure going forward. I think it makes sense. And I've heard you have concerns that perhaps it's too high, at least for the, the office, some of the office allocations. And we need to start somewhere. So is there a number you recommended starting lower than 20? I'm trying to figure out, like, we do need to start somewhere and then take, and then use the data going forward to inform our future budget decisions around this, because I think this makes, this makes sense to me to have this allocated the way it is. 20%, we have to start somewhere, 22, 15, whatever it is. What are you, is there a number that you're comfortable with? Or you just, or you just don't like the model? Yeah, you're not comfortable with the model being here.
I think that something smaller around 10% would be better.
And what are you deriving it from? Where is that coming from?
That's exactly the problem. It's, it's out of thin air.
Well, 22%, and, and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, is not out of thin air. That you, you. The model has been presented to this board. I'm comfortable with the model. We can always revisit it, I think, if we need to. I think it, I agree with Renee. We're starting somewhere. This is a starting point. Our CPA is here, has worked also with our treasurer. They, you know, you've come up with a benchmark. And it's substantiated. It will, Michael, well, the way this has been derived, the methodology, would this withstand the comptroller's audit based on the information and the conversations you've had and through emails with the comptroller?
I, well, I, I wouldn't presume to, to say what, you know, the comptroller's audits, you know, they can say one thing or another, but, you know, based on the communications that, that we've had with them and, and the information that we've, that we've looked at, I, I believe that, you know, based on the, the standards they've thrown out there, that, that it would be acceptable. Like I said, they, they don't, they don't want to get in the business of saying this is how you have to do it. They just want to say you should have, you know, a, a methodology that's documented and, and supported by some of your data. And, and I, I do think that, you know, what, what has been prepared meets those requirements.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I do too.
And I believe Jeff, our attorney at the last meeting, said that it was sound.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, you know, we've had a number of professionals weigh in, in addition to our professional treasurer. And I'm, I'm comfortable with, as you say, starting somewhere. We're starting with this and we certainly can revisit it. If you're in the office on a daily basis, you will see that our staff is working non-stop. And so to have to go back and did I talk to this person for 10 minutes about a sewer? Did I, you know, it's a lot. And it's even a lot for DPW to break it out. I know we've had those conversations as well, but they really try to do it to the very best of their ability. And I think really, for the first time for our village, we are able to see in a very transparent way, including the methodology, how these two departments really have the funds allocated. And I think this is a good thing, and I support this going forward. And I appreciate and respect your questions and your concerns about it. But this is a starting point, and it's a starting point that has substantive methodology.
Mayor, is there a way to underscore our commitment to revisiting this and making sure we're looking at it going forward to trustee like a 20%?
Sure. And I think that's what we do every year.
Right. Because we're starting somewhere. His concern is that if we just set it and forget it, it may be incorrect. So now that we are collecting data, is, is there a way to demonstrate that we're committed to revisiting it?
Well, I think we review, you know, to be honest, when I was looking at the numbers of breaking out Brooklyn's time and my time, I think Brooklyn's time is too little, which would increase the percentage.
So I have a question for you. When, when we're audited by an accounting firm, is this the kind of thing that they could add to their list of things that they would help us audit? No, not for comptroller.
That would be a question for Mike.
Yeah, Mike, can you add that to a list of things that you look at in the yearly? We get audited yearly, right?
No.
No, we, we don't, we haven't done an audit of the village. I'm not sure about an actual audit. What we've been, what we've been doing with the village over, you know, the, the last number of years is we, we come in and assist with preparation of the annual update document, which is what the village has to report to New York State on an annual basis. And previously, we were also coming in and performing bank reconciliations as a, as a control during the, the interim period that the village had the last couple of years prior to.
The duty's done at the time.
Yeah.
It's even more credible when, when there's a third-party unbiased person looking at it.
And it is certainly something that if the village was interested, you know, that we could come in and do a review of the, the calculation that's being performed and the analysis, if that was something that the village was interested in the future. But I do, I do just want to state also to the, to the comment that, that somebody just made about, you know, reviewing it moving forward. That's something that also would, would make a lot of sense and you would want to do that. You know, whether it's annually or biannually, you do want to make sure that you're continuing to evaluate that, that allocation and that calculation, because that's something that, you know, if the, the comptroller's office does come in and do an audit and they want to see the allocation or how the allocation was determined, and you reference a calculation from 15 years ago, that's something that they may have an, have an issue with too. So just to say that I think that it makes a good idea, makes for a good practice to, to, you know, be evaluating that as, on an ongoing basis.
The takeaway is it's not cast concrete, and it's a starting point. And we have a methodology in place. Okay, and I think, you know, that helps us move forward. And we know that we can revisit this and will revisit this, because nothing's static, you know, going forward. So.
Absolutely. I mean, this is reviewed, when we review wages, the percentages are reviewed, people's times are reviewed. When I look at the numbers, I talk to Zach, we talk about the percentage of times. I mean, in some cases, we could increase somebody's time or we could decrease somebody's time. Honestly, some of these numbers should be increased as far as I'm concerned. But we kept them on the lower side. And we ran, ran around 22%. I will tell you, when I was at Webster, it was just straight 50. And I didn't even look at that, because we have numbers to use to make that number. So it's a good solid number. And it's reviewed. When we do salaries, it's always reviewed.
Everything can be.
So the 22% one year could be 20% or it could be 30%, depending on how the salary allocation. It just gives a solid number to work with.
And it's likely that village operations will change, you know, moving forward as different, different things happen with the way that, that operations are handled as well.
Okay, we're past our 10 minutes. By one minute, is there any last quick question to wrap up or otherwise we'll thank Michael? Okay.
All right. Well, thanks for, thanks for having me today and let me know if there's anything else that I can do for the village.
Thank you. Thanks for your input. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Michael.
Brooklyn, can you promote me to a panelist so I can share my screen if I need to? So that people online can see what we're talking about?
If you're going to have to do the Excel, do the Excel on the screen.
Okay. I can catch.
Okay. Handoff. Yes. There's catching and throwing.
I just did the formulas on the existing.
I'm sorry.
How much of it is different? A lot of it?
6,000 off. I had to make some adjustments, and I think my computer grabbed the wrong cell. And I sent it out on Friday.
It's going to take me a couple of minutes.
I'm sorry. Well, I can go over what I did in the budget while you're doing this.
Yeah, let's keep moving.
Okay, from the request from the last meeting, I was requested to cut about $35,000. There were some suggestions given. First one was mayor's salary. We were looking to cut computers and desks. And then it was left up to my own, my own ideas, as I was understanding. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So you said mayor's salary, so 35, so.
So what I did, I took the.
No, 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 backup. The amount that we needed to raise was how much? What was the gap between our predicting?
My understanding was about $35,000 you were looking for me to cut out of the budget.
But that's, that's not the question I have. The question I have is what is, if we were to do a 0% tax increase, what is that amount of the budget?
Oh, sure. Well, to go zero, wow. I would have to drop right now another $40,000.
So call it 75K?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So what I did is I took the mayor's salary back to what it was initially proposed at, which was the same cost of living increases given to everybody. I took some money out of equipment. I did leave a computer in there, and I did leave a desk in there. And I made some adjustments elsewhere. I reduced our.
You cut that by 50%?
I cut that by 50%. I took some money out of supplies.
Quick question, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just so the board understands, so this is equipment that you have wanted in the budget for how long? I mean, this isn't just.
For a while. Normally, four to five years. We always, we always plan at least one to two computers replacement. Computers in our office have about a three-year lifespan.
Okay, so this is aged out by three years?
Yeah, usually three years. Sometimes we'll go four, depending. We try to reuse the computers best we can.
Sure.
But three years, a computer on, eight to 10 hours a day being used.
No, we understood it. Just, I think it's just helpful for us to know that this isn't like something brand-new that's coming, showing up in the budget. This is something that has been recurring.
Yeah. The desk, I have a desk that, I know one desk, if we move it, it's going to fall apart.
It'll fall apart, yeah.
What is the name of the file? So I have your drive here.
2023, 24, and it might say a two after it.
Okay, so it was modified, 2023, 24 budget Excel sheets two was modified today at 1:45 PM.
Okay, so, so there's that. And then I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just, just so people know.
So dwiddling a little here and there. I took some from contingency.
Yep.
And take from there. Can I?
Sorry, can I just ask, the spreadsheet, you said there was one that was modified today. Was that sent to the whole board?
No, it wasn't modified today. It was just re-saved today. It's, the spreadsheet you got is missing like a 6,000 gap. I realize that, my computer grabbed the wrong one. It took one off my desktop instead of my.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. It's the one that Dan is looking at, the same one that you sent out?
No, it's not. But you can have it in.
Yeah, I'd like to be looking at the same.
Once he uploads that doc, he can have this.
So it's the one you printed, though?
It's the one I printed.
Yeah.
The numbers in this, the numbers in this correlate to the spreadsheet.
Okay, I guess I'm, my concern here is that, and this is something that I asked about in the last meeting, too. The packet that's posted online does not have the budget, so the public can't see what we're looking at.
Correct.
And also, I, I understand that. But the board also didn't see the most-up-to-date copy until we actually sat down.
No, you've got that, right.
And that's why I would share my screen. That's why I would share my screen so that people can see it. Thank you.
Okay, well, while I'm on the topic, I just want to say that I do object to having a meeting and potentially voting on a budget where the public has no access to that information without doing a FOIL request or something. I believe that should just be posted with the packet. I would like to have that statement on the record, too.
The public sees the budget if we adopt a tentative budget, and it goes to public hearing. And as soon as we adopt a tentative budget, the public can see the budget and then weigh in on the budget. What we have now is we are a series of workshops. And, you know, Lily, you can link in on this, too. It's workshops. So we work through it to get to the point of a budget that we want to present to the public for their review. That's, I've never known it to be done any other way.
It just avoids the public getting upset if the initial numbers, the board.
Just misinformation.
It's my numbers coming, and then the board changes them to make them their own numbers.
The other important point is that we literally just said, there's not no visibility into it, literally sharing my screen. So the statement that there's no visibility is just incorrect. So I'm going to share my screen now.
I've made my position known, and other ones can go on the record as well. Thank you for listening to me.
Sure, and thanks for weighing in.
Do you want to do appropriations first, or general fund or sewer?
I'm working on general fund.
Did you want to just finish up, though, where you were sort of making touches?
Yeah, I took, like I said, I took a little from here and there. Roads.
Come back on road work.
Equipment.
So when you say equipment, what equipment is that? Is that the DPW?
DPW. I took 1,000 from there. I took 1,000 from here.
And then also, you took away a truck that they.
Overall?
Yeah.
From the beginning of the budget?
Right.
I've taken away a truck. I've taken away the windows for the hall.
The window repairs, and those were identified decades ago.
Correct.
And repeatedly not been addressed. Okay. Just so we really understand that we're here today, we're cutting the budget.
We've been cutting.
These things still don't get done. And to coin a phrase from a friend, the can gets kicked down the road.
Correct.
And I just want everybody to really be aware of that, that there's implications. Because then when we circle back and we can do something, it costs a heck of a lot more.
The, I didn't take away the HBA system, because A, we're on our last leg, B, with the grants, the amount bang for the buck is only like $10,000. So it's not worth it to take a chance of losing the heating and cooling. So, you know, it's a juggling act between your revenue sources and your appropriations to find the right items to cut, to make that, the cuts the board was looking for. I took away from flowers. I took away from.
Benches.
Benches. I took away from the arboretum. I reduced it to its.
Went back to the previous.
I think I took previous or cut 2,000 out of it. I took away from TY Lin. I reduced that appropriation to $1,000, because we're also training Zach in the hopes that he can back up Steve. So hopefully, we can get rid of that line. But in the meantime, I didn't want to tie any more into that line than I needed to. So that's where I took the money. It's nipping here and there and hoping we can keep into lines. The, the one good thing with a budget is it's a total budget. And the total budget works together to accommodate all the purposes. So if we have to shift money like we always do, we have the ability to do that. So maybe one line will come in last year, maybe one line will come in more. We'll play. We're going to have to play. It's, you know, there is no gravy in the budget. You know, if there was any built-in, I took it away anyway along the way. So it's where it's at. And this is, right now, without major cuts, and I don't even know where to start for those, you're looking at a tax increase of 4.3855.
Let's not get there yet. We'll get to the, let's look, go through the outliers. Dorothea, a quick commendation of you on taking to this point. That's wonderful. This is an unpleasant part of our job, where we're not questioning you. I want to be clear on that. But we have to look at it and ask a whole bunch of what-ifs.
That's fine.
And, and I in no way want to mean that as a criticism of you. I would bet someone that we will end up much closer to what you have presented than what will, we're not going to find anything under rocks, is my guess, but we have to do this.
Oh, that's fine. I just say.
I also want to thank you for working over the weekend to finish this up after you tried to have a vacation. Yeah.
I also appreciate all of your efforts on this, Dorothea. And any of my criticisms about the budget are certainly not criticisms of you, just trying to have a constructive discussion and to move forward.
And all I can say is if the board wants to change the process of how we give out the budget information, that's a board decision. I'm following the past practices that have been done for several years. The reason protective of those practices is the same line. We don't post tentative meeting or draft minutes. We don't want the public to receive information that could be erroneous or cause upset when it's not necessary. So, I mean, I'm all for open, obviously, anybody can come in and get a copy of this. I'm willing to do that.
We're open right now. This is a public workshop.
I just don't want to get people upset until, obviously, don't get upset until there's a reason to get upset.
I would just, I appreciate that. I understand it. We should have that discussion. I wanted to possibly even take further pressure off of you, because I think that under village law, the budget officer who's responsible for the tentative budget is actually the mayor and not the treasurer. So I appreciate all of your work. I understand that your work is mostly administrative, and that this is the mayor's tentative budget.
Ultimately. So we all work on it together.
You're golden, Dorothea. Thank you.
We'll see.
Okay.
All right.
So let's, where are we?
Okay, so.
You covered everything that you.
I'm good.
Okay, I just want to make.
All right, so I'm going to sort this, and we'll just look at the, the highest numbers, the ones that have changed the most.
Okay.
So where are you here?
Well, it's tough with that, so.
No, I feel like I'm going to log into the meeting as a spectator, so I could view it. Am I allowed to do that?
Yeah.
So conferences is 25% higher, but it's only $125. Conferences, 15% higher, but it's only $200. Here's, here's a fairly large one. Equipment under clerk went from 5,500 to 7,800, which is a 42% increase. It's a computer replacement and new desks.
Desk. And it's also additional, whatever, software, whatever we charge to it.
Everybody comfortable with a 42% increase there?
And that's with cutting it in half?
Yes, I cut down a computer and I cut down a desk.
Okay. So the increase is reflecting 50% of what was requested by office.
Copies went up 13%.
Yeah, that's based on true, because our copies have increased.
Website went up 25%.
It's overall cost.
Is that a quote from a vendor saying?
No, that is our vendor.
Oh, it is? Okay, so it's just a correction? Okay. Miscellaneous went up 25% from 1,200 to 1,500 under clerk.
It's just miscellaneous, I'm just saying.
Okay. Can we find $500 there? Can we? No, no. No, it's not.
It's not then.
Code updates went up 6% from 4,700 to 5,000.
Because we're anticipating doing some.
Yeah. Soglin went up 160%, but that's misleading, because it went, well, it went from 2,000 to 5,200.
Yes, that's miscellaneous. That's the quote directly from Ms. Soglin.
Okay.
When the attorneys give me their quotes, I know, stick with the numbers.
See what else we got. Engineer went up 80%.
Yep, we got a lot of projects we're looking to.
From 25K to 45K.
Yeah.
Yep. Road projects.
Yeah, we're doing so many capital improvement projects. I'll have to linger.
That's a, now, where did that 45K come from? Was that a quote from him?
That's estimates of the current projects we have going on, and the cost, and the cost of engineering has almost doubled over the year, last year and a half. I think the one project that even looking at, we haven't brought to board yet, we just got the quotes for the engineering on South Street, are anticipated of that was 35,000 a few years ago, and it's gone to 75,000. So I think it's a safe number for the multitude of projects that are going on. Honestly, I don't know what's a safe number with that. I think that's a starting point. And depending on the project, it might, you know, that's a line that might be, depending if we don't do a project, we'll get a project, might take some from there or need to add to it.
Now, to be clear, that does not include South Street.
That does not include South Street.
I'm wondering if this is a place we could save a little off. That's a very big jump from 25 to 45. Could we do 5K off of that?
These are deferred, these are projects. I don't know.
It's South, it's Wood, it's Sutherland.
Well, it's significantly more. And these are projects that we waited up for a while. I mean, we had the bridge project, so we couldn't do some of these road projects. I'm hesitant to do that, 5,000. I don't know. That's my opinion.
To be clear, South is already a separate line item at another 30. So what we're talking about is 75K.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, yeah, we're.
Well, Southwood and Sutherland, am I correct? So it's three streets at 75K, now one street at 75K. And all three streets have been in the hopper for how long?
Six years now.
There's additional engineering that comes up all the time, whether he's putting down sidewalk, or there's some kind of grade level that's off for storm sewer.
Yes, even getting DOT permits sometimes requires engineering.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, so there are lots of different ways.
I mean, and these are projects that.
Honestly, this is all stuff that, to me, is a necessity.
We're investing in our village.
And being a professional, you know.
Yeah, we're investing in our infrastructure.
Okay. Records management personnel services, growing from 10K to 15,400, a 54% increase.
That was an increase in hours and?
Yeah, so, now, that does not include, so we've got a really good team right now. We've got Dorothea, Brooklyn, Megan. Well, Steve, we don't count him.
Yeah, but I mean, I just think of him because he's in the office.
Right.
He doesn't do the records.
So I'm, I'm wondering if that's a place we could cut a little bit of cost. Maybe just keep it where it was last year at 10K and save 5,400.
I'm going to say, I'm going to beg you to say no, because I have no one doing that job right now.
This is an open slot we're trying to fill.
We're trying to fill it. And on top of that, we've been made aware that Megan is leaving. So, so the team I have in place isn't the team I'm going to have. And honestly, a little leeway in there, as I said, lines work together. So if we do find we're overfunded in that line, we can shift it to other lines that need it. But to be honest, I don't think we're overfunded because there's going to be catch-up work in that department to get it back to speed the way it needs to be. So I'm going to say, please no.
And I'm in agreement with that, just knowing how things work in the office.
I, I think, so that does not include a full-time assistant clerk. So, right, so I think having four, or we'll call it three full-time bodies between Dorothy of Brooklyn and the assistant clerk slash archivist, records management is enough. I don't think having three full-time plus a part-time is needed and it's a big expense.
So the position that we are trying to fill now, the administrative archivist, is the part-time position? And you're saying to eliminate that position?
No.
I'm, I'm trying to see if you can clarify for me please.
So Megan's salary is currently not just in this line item.
No, Megan's salary shifted out of that line and into the deputy, so.
Right, so we are, nobody's saying to get rid of the deputy clerk plus records management person. I just don't think we need another than part-time or.
You're thinking we can function on three full-time people without an archivist?
Without a part-time.
I would argue we can't because.
I can't see it.
Okay.
I've been arguing no because that job isn't being done.
It's absolutely not being done.
Buildings were at plus 175% on Village Hall, which goes from 15K to 41, which is the HBS.
Yes.
Okay, contractual grant writers goes from 10K to 20K.
Yes.
And we have expended the 10K this year.
We overextended that 10K.
So is, is 20K the right number? Can we get away with getting up to maybe 15K? So we still get more than we're getting this year, but, but we're not doubling it.
Again, since the quotes that we've received and seen for grant writers come in over 20.
Routinely.
Routinely. I think it's a solid number for one, one or two projects.
Is that a cost? Does the town have anyone who does grant writing or do they outsource that as well?
I, I think they have.
They do both.
I didn't know.
They, actually, I know that they contract, because I know somebody who's contracted to do it. I don't know that, I'm not so sure they have somebody full-time in-house.
You didn't know for future. Obviously, it's too late for this budget.
Oh, I've reached out to the town on numerous occasions and it, it, it's just not feasible.
Okay.
In terms of the workload that they have. Yeah.
The next one. July wind went down 50% from 2,000 to 1,000.
And you're bringing, right, you're not quite, one of the things that I got.
I cut because I'm looking this year and we're not going to use it, so why fund it fully for next year?
Why did fleet maintenance, vehicle and equipment repairs maintenance go down from 50K to 40K?
Because that was one of the lines that was a catch-all. And we.
So you've got better allocated?
You got different allocations.
Highway garage maintenance jumped 134%. Went from, this is the new furnace. Okay.
Yeah.
Lighting repairs went up from 4,500 to 10,000. It says contractual.
Yes, we were doing more repairs on lights. We run into, we spent more than we allocated for this year.
I'm trying to think of.
Yeah. Yeah, it's gone up.
Trying to think of what that was.
What we anticipated, yeah, what we anticipated in this year's budget, we overspent. So we had to increase it as we went along and we anticipate to do more.
Yeah, just keep in mind, I mean, everything, well, CPI might be, you know, maybe 6 to 8%. Everything has doubled, if not more, especially when it comes to contractual stuff. So a lot of the lighting and stuff that would be, would require contractors, you don't figure out it's going to be $350 an hour.
Okay, arboretum grew 33% from 6K to 8K.
Correct.
And did not, there's nothing that has been expended this year on us.
Correct. That was a request. It was originally funded at 6, so it's requested take it to 10. I cut it by 2.
Was there justification why it would be 10?
You requested it.
You requested it, yeah.
Celebration, security expenses up by 13%. That's fine. Planning and zoning board, that's not a lot. Almost there. State retirement went up 29%.
That's based on salaries. And that I have no control over. That's the allocation that they come up with, their percentages and increases.
Dental health insurance up 41%.
Yeah, again, I've already spoke to the board.
Based on headcount?
That's based, based on use, current use and increased use.
People taking care of the teeth. That's good.
Rabo's sweeper lease went up 30% from 18 to 23.
That's coming off of our lease agreement.
That's it. So the total general fund appropriations are up 6%. Do you want to do the sewer or not?
Sewer's going to have, sure.
The sewer is going to have a lot more because you've created.
Because we created lines in the sewer. There's a lot of bringing in.
Let me just look for outliers though. Total street maintenance transportation is up 44% in the sewer fund.
Correct.
That's because we're allocating differently.
Yes, because we're allocating different.
Yeah.
I think there's the vehicle and, I don't know, the vehicle, but equipment and other things.
Yeah, social security up 25%. Okay. Do you want to do, take a look at the revenue outlier screen?
Sure.
This should just take a moment. Okay, here we go. This is, this is much shorter. So let me get rid of these, zero.
So where are you here? Sorry.
Revenue.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry that we're losing Megan.
Yeah, yeah. Great.
Okay, almost there. So here are the outliers. We've got property taxes going up 4.4%. We've got non-property sales tax going up 2.7%. That's in the account 1100. Does that seem like a good number?
I'm happy with it.
So our current earned. Over. We're currently at 55% of our yearly budget.
Actually, we're more than that. We just got our last allocation. We only need like 120,000 to come in to make.
Do you know what that allocation was?
178,000? On sales tax?
On sales tax.
No, it was one.
It was 170 something.
It was like 178.
Was it? No. I know that look.
It was in a previous meeting.
Yeah, we.
It was part of the packet.
You informed the board, yeah.
I mean, I believe it was 178.
Yeah, but we're, we're slightly ahead.
Yeah, we're ahead.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so what I'm going to ask is, do we have enough? So we're 18% off. So we're at five, if you add in the 178 to where we are right now, we're at 538,000 on a budget of 657. So how would we make up that final 18%?
We get another thing comes in in late May, June.
Yeah.
That's the last quarter.
Four disparities, we'd be pretty equal?
Yes.
Yeah.
I expect the last one to be.
All right.
Close to the same amount.
Okay, so if the last one is close to the same amount.
It's about, might be 40,000 will be ahead in that line. But I don't want to go the full amount of anticipated.
You don't know until you get it.
We don't know.
Yeah. So if it's the same amount, we would be 9% over. So we would be at 716 on a budget of 657.
So comfortable with that.
We've then budgeted 675 and our receipts this year could be 716. I'd say you could, you could safely budget those receipts, the estimated receipts a little higher than 675.
I'd rather not because there's, because there's reasons. I know, you know, I'd rather not. The reasons I don't is because some changes the governor's made with the gasoline taxes and other anticipated changes with the allocations and collections. So I think we should go up a little bit, but I don't want to go up too high.
I don't understand that.
And I'm sorry I cut you off.
Clerk fees went up from 3,000 to 4,000.
Yep, we've already surpassed this year.
So this year we burned 8,600.
Actually, it's dropped. We, I mean, 5,000 of that was the grant we received and I moved that to the appropriate line. So we received 3,600. We still have, so I think 4,000 is reasonable.
Zoning fees went from 1,500 to 4,000. We budgeted 1,500. We received 4,000. And next year we're budgeting 2,000. Is that, are there zoning fees associated with 75 Monroe or something?
That we budgeted 1,500. And proposing 2,000.
Right, but to, to date this year, we've received 4,000.
No.
That's what's in the, that's what's listed.
Oh, maybe. I'm not looking at that sheet. We, yes, we received some additional things. It, it's one of those things you never know what's going to come in. It's a guess. So I think we had some additional big items that came in and I don't want to count them.
Couple more. Interest will be higher?
Yep.
Okay.
We've been getting better interest along the way. It went from 1% to almost 4%. So.
13.
So we can book an extra couple thousand in there.
Building permits, this, this one's a little challenging for me. So we budgeted 1700, 17,000 for this year. We've only received 7,300.
Yep.
And next year it's budgeted for 20K.
Yep.
So there's, there's a big disparity in all three of those.
No, there's the, there's some big numbers that are coming in and we're going to see those in the next couple of months. Plus, I didn't fully count in 75 Monroe, but I'd be silly not to say some of it's accountable, so we should see some increase in there. If anything, it probably went like, but I really don't have a solid number to go on that 75, so I did book a couple of extra thousand.
Do we get more building permit revenue as it gets warmer? Okay. Parking fines, we collected none so far. It comes in later.
No, that's, that's complicated and we, we're resolving it. The way the parking structure has been, is it working? So what's going to happen? We collect the tickets. I have to send it to the town. The town has to send it to the state. Then we get a check. What's going to happen is my understanding, we're working all out with the new tickets. The parking fines will be paid directly to the court. Then we'll get a check. Right now, we're sitting on, the court doesn't know how I should give them the previous collected money. So we have a lot of money in parking fines sitting in.
Just still needs to be collected.
Due to, due from, so it will.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but there's one more step. It goes to the state, but the town is involved. The town gives us the check.
Percentage, right.
So it's, there's a lot of layers and so we're really trying to streamline this process.
Yeah, I'm pushing. I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks I can send all the collections I have to the town. So they can send it to the state. So they can send me back a check that I can count as actual revenue.
And it's a concern for the court too. It's not just, you know, everybody's saying, wait a second, how do we?
Yes, it's very frustrating. It's like three hard money and you just spread it around. Who's going to do it?
Will we get that mortgage tax?
We will.
Okay.
We're, mortgage tax, we're 50% collected on right now, so I anticipate we'll get the other 50%.
Right, yeah, because right now it says we've received 2,000 of 4.
Oh, are we making mortgage bill of course to us? Hold on. Mortgage tax, we received 20,000 of that. No, maybe not. I got to look at it. I don't have that sheet. But whatever it is, yes, that's what we collected. We will get it. Actually, I think it's gross utilities. We're expecting any time.
Okay, that's it.
So sewer, is that, that's the revenue line I think we all want to talk about.
Okay. Okay, so this is percent change. This is a very short one.
Yes, it is. Only a couple ones.
We're proposing 3% less in sewer receipts.
No. 15%.
What's that?
It's 15%.
Oh, on, on the rents, but yeah, on the top it's 15%.
15%.
Yeah, on the bottom with the interest and then appropriate fund balance.
The appropriate fund balance is reduced. The last two years, the intent was to take from fund balance to fund CIPP project. Zach can explain, but we didn't end up, not end up needing to take that much, correct?
Yeah, I think we're going to be finding just the recovery. Yeah.
Yeah, so the good news is the fund balance isn't being hit, but the bad news is even though that fund balance isn't being hit, it's still too high. So instead of hitting the sewer rents for the whole impact of the increases from the new allocations, my thought was let's take some from the fund balance. It's good offset to help those accounts.
Sophomore question, but I'm going to hear it.
Yeah.
The point being that we can't justify a raise in the sewer rent when we're carrying such large fund balances.
I would agree. We're, we're justifying a 15%, but I don't want to justify a 25%.
Well, clearly not.
I'd rather go a little bit on the rents and a little take from fund balance and not wipe out fund balance, just use it appropriately. As we look at the reallocation, when we get the new reserve numbers and start maneuvering money, I think, I don't want to take it all. And I think you should have some liquid in there as well. It's getting to a happy medium and since we're not, haven't touched it again this year, I feel it's more appropriate to touch it for this. Because this way it's just offsetting for all of the tax rate or the sewer rate. That makes sense.
Okay.
So as, as far as the, the balance policy that I forgot that we had earlier in the meeting. All right, with, with the appropriations from the reserve fund, we're staying within the balance policy that we established.
We probably, it's 10 to 15%. Honestly, I do think at some point, maybe when things quiet down, I would like to bring the fund balance policies back. Since general has had a, a recovery and looking good. And so is sewer always has looked good in fund balance. I think we can safely increase that fund balance policy to 20%. I think having a better percentage is only two or, we can set that. 10 to 15 is kind of low. Because if you really have a emergency, I don't think that's really going to cover it.
And my understanding was it was years ago, wasn't it around 20?
I think it started 20 and reduced it because it was, I want to say it was, it was a tough number to maintain, but I think we're okay to maintain now. And I think.
So we're in a healthier position.
And I don't think sewer should be automatically a reflection of general. I think it should have its own number depending on its basis. And it has a very healthy fund balance, so I think an appropriate number for that. And a lot of its reserves that are existing are almost fully funded. So when we reestablish those reserves, we can either fully fund the rest of them or get a good healthy chunk done and put a healthy amount in the open. That's my recommendation.
Great. Those are the outliers. I didn't see the negative outliers unless it really jumped out.
I think you're going to see a lot of negative outliers because of the reallocation.
Right.
And I wouldn't disagree that the reallocation helped general, but it's appropriate.
Well, I'd like to sort of word it that the reallocation shows more accurately.
Yes.
General.
Correct.
And.
Yeah, it, it's been needed and I asked for this for a while, so.
Okay. Okay, so where, any other, where are we? What's your next step?
My next step here is to get adopted, adopted, but a motion to accept the tentative budgets as presented. So I can get them posted to the newspaper. We can move the process along. We have a public hearing on April 13th.
Or was it 20th?
Which 13.
It was 13th, you're right.
It's the first meeting in April. I hope I clarify that. I believe it's the 13th.
No, I know. Don't listen.
The meeting will be the 27th.
Yeah.
You know, we can do continued work after that and make changes after the public hearing to whatever numbers we feel are differing or should be relooked at. But I think right now, you know, you know, we can make some minor changes. But I think right now, you know, you know, we can make some minor changes. The board still needs to review salaries. I would say any changes with salaries, if it's negative and gonna reduce salary, goes into contingency, because I think we're a little light on contingency. So, but that's an executive session. That's not my determination. The numbers for the salaries, I use the same number we're giving by contract to the union employees. So I just use that across the board.
And that's a 3.5?
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's a board decision any further than that. I'm just, for budgetary purposes, I had to have a starting point for salaries.
Did we ever have a conversation about the legal fees? Did we ever do a deep dive on that?
We looked at them, and you requested an increase with Hudson to 10,000. And all those are estimates received.
So in years past, we have adjusted them when we thought we should. I think it probably merits spending five minutes on it.
Sure.
So here they are on the screen.
So the Osborne municipal is our work for this board?
And that's decreased because portion now is being reflected in sewer for what he is.
Oh, right, okay.
So overall, did he, did it go up?
It went up to 85,000 was the estimate that I forwarded to the board from 80,000 the last two years.
HPB is staying flat?
He's keeping that flat.
CZDA is staying flat, 192. Osborne litigation, we've got 3,500 in there. It's probably a good idea.
Yeah, he remarked that, just because there has been a few issues, and that goes outside of the municipal.
Osborne PCP, now, here's one that jumps out as a little funny. So the budget for this year was 20. So far this year, they've allocated, we've paid 31. And next, oh, wait, 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 yeah. And the budget for next year, I just lost that one.
It's 2,000.
It's 2,000.
Correct. That's per estimate. We anticipate they're pretty much done.
That was per Jeff.
That was per Jeff.
You know, that the project was moving forward.
The year before was 17,753. I'm not sure that we can assume that our legal expenses on PCP will go down to $2,000 in the heat of what's happened. I would, I would allocate that, I would advocate that should be higher. Last year, we spent 18. This year, we're gonna spend more than 30, because this year's not done yet.
Correct, but I think they are done at that board at this time.
And next year, we've budgeted 2. This is very light.
What are you thinking, but kind of a number?
It does feel light, but we were also through a lot of the process. So I don't know.
Yeah, because now it's sort of in the review process with the consultants, and then, you know, they would start.
They finished the LWRP, they did all the other stuff that they were gonna do through that board. They got all their approvals.
What are you thinking, though?
I think it's done.
I think it's baked in. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not.
It does feel weird to only have two.
I know.
Having that for so long, so I understand what you're saying, and it's worth looking at.
But, you know, essentially, even for the HPB going forward, once, you know, it's vetted through the consultants and all the final plans, and we look at their building permit, and then it's out of the hands of, you know, the HPB and...
And we have 24,000 budgeted for the HPB. But that's, some of that is their regular.
Regular, yeah.
I just think 2 is light. I'd bump it up to 10. This, when have we not had legal stuff to do?
Well, this is specific to PCP.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I mean, I actually, in terms of... Well, see, now we have Hodgson, and Hodgson's really, you know, they're representing our board now in terms of oversight with the consultants and, you know, the sort of the clearinghouse, really, so. He's far more engaged, Attorney Spitzer.
We had almost nothing to do this past year as well, and we still had, we still expended 7,200 so far, and the year's not over. So the thought that we would break 10,000 is pretty likely. I don't know, I just, yeah.
Right, every time we call for a question, if we need to write a statement of anything, we run it by our attorneys. So yeah, no, I don't know. I, I, I hope we're done.
Yeah, but maybe is it still too light? Even if we're done, is it, you know, I think there's a valid concern.
Yeah, yeah.
Just a suggestion, since this is a specific line, it is one project, there's no active litigation, and that I don't think has any applications in front of that board right now. What we could possibly do is if we want some more money in terms of a general fund for a legal counsel for that board, which could be used for any purpose related to litigation based on an HPB determination, we could put some money towards that.
Just make a general.
I don't feel it's really appropriate to be funding litigation when there's nothing that's even in front of them.
So just make it a general.
We don't want to fund and create a case, right?
It's an omen.
Something would jump up to fill that gap. I don't think we need to.
No, you raise a good point, because there is, there is no outstanding litigation. I don't, you know, but I think also, when it says PCP, I don't know that it's directly used for litigation. For example, Hodgson, it says litigation, but really where Hodgson is now is really the oversight with all of the consultants and making sure that everybody's on the same page and complying. So I think we need to even just remove the term litigation from the line, because we're not in litigation. That's what I'm seeing. Yeah, but you raise a good point, you know.
Yeah, and back to this point, there was no outstanding litigation in this fiscal year, and we've spent 38,000 on it so far. The thought that next year we would spend 12 doesn't seem realistic.
So what?
I would bump it up another 10,000.
Under Osborne? Which one are you looking at?
Osborne, Russ, right?
Or Hodgson? Which, who are you looking, because at Osborne right now, I see it at 2?
Right.
So you wanted it 12,000 for Osborne?
Well.
I, yeah, I thought you were talking about Hodgson, Russ.
But it doesn't really matter.
Okay.
Just the thought of us having more than 12,000 in a budget, we spent 38.
Specifically for PCP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And how would we like to fund that 10,000 after boards in agreement?
This is a spreadsheet that...
No, that's a different page. Okay, what page do you want?
Page three.
Page three. Oh, yeah, I overshot.
Didn't Jeff give us these numbers? I mean, why?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So these were estimates that were presented to us.
Got it.
I'm not against adding a buffer there. I would just add it in a separate line, not tied to PCP for general defense of HPB determinations and maybe half of what Trustee Keating is asking for.
So an additional 5?
Additional 5.
In different allocation, allocated line, sorry.
I think that would be better. I don't want to put PCP's name on it. We don't have anything that...
Okay, so do we put it under the Osborne litigation line?
I couldn't create a miscellaneous.
Well, but you have Osborne litigation, then you have Osborne PCP.
But if we don't want to sign it to PCP, put it in litigation?
Put it in litigation, that's what I'm saying. Then it's a general litigation. I see where you're going with that, Justin, so just throw it into general litigation and...
I'm not sure I'd put it under Osborne. I'd put it under miscellaneous.
Oh, for either for any attorney?
I could create a legal miscellaneous line.
Yeah, legal miscellaneous. There we go.
Okay, I can create a legal miscellaneous line for 5,000.
Why is it 5? So just to remind everybody, we've spent 38 so far this year. We're only three quarters of the way through the year.
But I think also, you know, once, once the consultant's finished the roll and it's vetted and there's a building permit, then the level of legal oversight goes down, and it would simply be, you know, the code enforcement oversight, you know, those things that, that actually the applicant is, the developer's paying for.
So if there's some disagreement between the engineering and some of that oversight and the applicant, do we have that covered if we needed to get advice?
It would be under miscellaneous litigation, but, but also.
I think that's what Dan said.
But it's a good question. Does that, is that paid for by the applicant or is that paid for?
I don't have the answer. Jeff Turner was walking in. I know.
Also, should we do a time check?
So if I'm increasing it, how am I hitting the increase?
You should find 5,000 somewhere else.
Okay. Is the board agreement that I can adjust numbers by 5,000 other lines to increase the miscellaneous legal line? I can't do 10. I cannot do that.
I think it's so pared down. I'm kind of hitting the wall on all of this.
I'm already gonna tell you, TY Lynn's gonna be wiped out.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, I mean, we'll start there.
I'll start there and steal here from there 500 here. I'll get to 5,000, but I can't get to 10.
There's no way. I mean, we haven't gone over this.
If that's good, everybody's in agreement, if we can at least have an acceptance of this tentative budget at the levels proposed, so we can call it quits and the HPB can do their work tonight.
Sounds good.
So is our motion to accept the tentative budget with the...
Just one last comment. I had raised some concerns at the last budget meeting as well. So I won't, I know we've got a tight timeline here. I'll just refer to that meeting. I have some concerns about this process going from a flat tax rate to a flat tax rate, a rate to one that exceeds the tax cap by quite a bit, 4.4%. I think, you know, that demonstrates that we need to go back to some fundamentalism, look at better long-term planning, so I don't support this right now.
Thank you.
So if we don't put a tentative budget forward, what happens? Knowing that we can change the budget at this point, we've talked about this at length at the previous meeting. We put a tentative budget out, we still work on it, but if we don't agree to a tentative budget tonight or we don't...
You create chaos and mayhem, is what you do. To be honest, I believe the budget becomes the budget that's presented in front of you. It's, I don't have a solid answer on that, and nor would I want to give a solid answer. My understanding, there was nothing definitive in the NICON stuff that I looked at, but I think it's always safer to adopt a tentative budget than if the board doesn't agree on a budget. The tentative budget is the budget. But right now, I can't say.
I know we've done that.
It's been always the practice of order. At least accepts the tentative budget.
And then we continue to work on it, right? Okay.
Pretty much how it's been done. Yeah, well, that was a discussion that we had at the last meeting. There was some confusion regarding, I thought the process was that if we did not accept the tentative budget, that the current budget stayed in place until such time, that then we...
I can't guarantee that. I think once the budget officer has presented the tentative budget, the tentative budget is...
Even though it has not been accepted?
Even though it's not been accepted. I can't give you 100% on that, but that's what I read in review today.
Okay.
So.
And, and, you know, the bulk of the work has been done on the budget. I mean, we're talking now about 5,000. Where do we get it, you know, out of an entire budget, you know? I think a lot of really good work's been done. And I do think, you know, we have our deadlines also with the state.
I need to post things, you know, I have to give something to post to the public.
Yeah.
So. Really, I...
So we can make a motion.
So I'll make a motion to, what's the right phrase?
To accept the tentative general and sewer budget.
General and sewer budget, and with the intent of still sharpening our pencils and working on it more.
For 2023 or 2024.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Liken?
No.
Trustee Lanfair?
No.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for the good work.
Motion to close?
Oh, yeah. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay.